Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky. Regular meeting, City Hall, December 21st, 2021, 4:30. We will have a beginning. We've already have accomplished the invocation. It was also a thank you to the many, many, many citizens that stood up to be an arm of our government to show us and help us and take care of our community in ways that we thought are is unfathomable. Where we are as a city is incredible because of the love and the commitment shown across our community. I'm humbled, and I know you're humbled, and I know we've all witnessed miracles. And we have come together as a community that we have probably never imagined in our lifetime, nor we ever wanted to think of. But that day came, and you answered. We appreciate you, we love you, and we feel you because of the support and love that you give in our community. Dana, she had a minute ago, the Reverend, I'll let you say the name that gave the invocation for record, and then she's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So, thank you, Dana.
Yes, I want to thank again Reverend Courtney Warren, the new head pastor at State Street Baptist Church. He led us in our invocation, as well as all the other pastors holding Reverend Warren up together in prayer for us tonight. So now, I will lead us in the pledge. If everyone will stand, and we'll say the pledge of allegiance to the flag together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Jackson, will you please provide our roll call?
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Mayor Alcott.
Here. Mr. Mizel, do you have comments at this time?
First of all, just a little business, and I'd like to make a few comments myself. But I want to remind anybody in the audience tonight that would like to make public comments at the end of the meeting, make sure you sign up on the clipboard back there with our in the corner to make public comments at the end of the meeting. And I would like to echo what the mayor said. We are have just undergone an unprecedented event in time for this city and this county. And the way our team worked with the county's team, all the other agencies, was really a sight to see. And the way the community showed up for us and our neighbors, neighboring states, neighboring communities all over the state, it's, it just, it takes me back. And I just want to thank each and every one of you all, the board, for your patience and your understanding, and for my team, senior management team, and city staff, all that we've done, and BGMU, the utilities, the county, and on and on and on. There's so many thank yous. And I know I'll never get to the end of the list because it's so long. But we couldn't, we, like the mayor said, this is for public consumption. We could not have done this without our community, city and county. And government cannot solve all problems. We do our best to do what we can do with what we have, and we're going to continue to do that. And so, we also would like the public to know that we are here for assistance and can direct people to where they can get assistance and help where they need be. And with that being said, I just want to make sure this gets out as many times as we can is our new website. We are bgstrong.com. And that's where you can tell your neighbors and your friends to go. It's updated multiple times a day. Anything you want to know about the aftermath of the storm, where to send your friends and family for help or whatever you need. If you can't get it there, then you call 393-4116, and we'll get you, we can get anybody help that needs help. So, we don't want anybody to fall through the cracks, and we're here for everybody. And I think the county would say the same thing. But I just want to say thank you again to everyone. It's been an unbelievable team effort, and it's been something to see. So, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Next is our-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one more thing. We do have a couple of late file items that I would ask your permission to add to the agenda, and those are in your updated agenda packets. I believe Ashley will read the ordinance numbers to add to late file. Ashley?
Sure. We will need a motion in a second to add ordinance number BG 2021-51, as well as ordinance number 2021-52.
All moved.
Second.
All right. That was moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right. First is approval of her minutes, regular meeting, December 7th, 2021. Any discussion?
All moved.
Second.
All right. Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-217.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Michael Yonker to the position of police sergeant in the police department.
All moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Sorry, I always do that, Carlos.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Mr. Mizel.
We have a vacant sergeant position at the police department due to the resignation of Sergeant Jake Forster. Would like to thank him for all of his years of service, and he moved on to another opportunity. And would like Chief Delaney to come up and make his recommendation for replacement, promotion to sergeant. Chief?
Commissioners, before I even start tonight, I'd like to say thank you. The last seven to 10 days has been tough for public safety. All the men and women of Bowling Police Department and Fire Department have joined together with your support and the community's support. So, thank you and thank this community for rallying behind us while we had some difficult days. I know the difficult days are still ahead of us, but it's been amazing to work hand in hand with everyone to get to this point. So, tonight I bring before you Michael Yonker, if you'd like to stand, please, for promotion to sergeant. As Mr. Mizel said, this position is vacant because of Sergeant Forster, who resigned to go into a federal job. He served the community well, left some big shoes to fill. But I stand before you tonight with a man who can fill them, an informal leader and a leader in our organization. And if you wouldn't mind if Elise, his wife, we have infiltrated in the lines. Elise works for the Fire Department, so I've got the inside scoop anytime I need it now. And their son, Charlie and Jacob, is here with him tonight. Officer Yonker started with the Police Department in 2010. He's been an informal leader ever since. He's an advanced crime scene processor, and one of the reasons we have such a great processing team now. He's handled a lot of major cases. He's also an accident reconstructionist, two of the hardest specialized units that we have in the department, and he leads the way and shines in both of those areas. He's also on the, it's drone team, unmanned pilot, which is also a tough course to get through, to get your pilot's license. And he's also a police training officer, so he trains all the new officers, and he does a phenomenal job. So, he's already a leader, and he's stepping into a new position to be another leader, to create more leaders for our organization. And I'm pleased to present him to you tonight, and I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. No questions at this time, so let's make this official. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations. All right. Municipal order number 2021-218.
Municipal order approving the reappointment of Jeffrey Stein and appointments of Jimmy Beckham and Donna Harmon to the City of Bowling Green Board of Ethics.
All moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. I will take this one. There are, right now, the reappointment Jeffrey, and Jimmy is the new appointment, Donna is the new appointment. I've reached out to the community. Dr. Reverend Lee gave me a recommendation of Jimmy, and under circumstances, I have not talked to him personally, but I have confidence because I had some help in this and doing to the moment. Donna Harmon, she was the previous chairman of the BGMU board, and she's a person that I believe can bring honesty and integrity. And so, with these and the reappointment of Jeffrey Stein, I recommend these to the board for the Board of Ethics. Questions or concerns? Thank you. Okay. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-219.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Sue Perigin, Eric Walker, and Rick Wilson to serve on the Intermodal Transportation Authority, Inc., Board of Directors, and authorizing the submission of reappointments to the Warren County Judge Executive.
All moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. These are three individuals that have served honorably and served well and brought much, much prosperity to our community. They each have told me personally that they would like to continue to serve. They were previously, by previous mayor, by previous commissions, but I have the utmost confidence in these three to continue to serve, and they have my recommendation. So, there's questions? I'll take them at this time.
Should we not vote on that?
Yeah, you could abstain. I don't think that's the right word.
Hmm?
If you're going to abstain, I need to leave.
You don't have to. You don't have to.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-220.
Municipal order authorizing the continuation of an agreement with Medbin relating to employee health and third-party administrator services for calendar year 2022.
All moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
As you all know, the city has its own self-funded healthcare plan. That's a $7 million, $7 million to $8 million fund that we manage and pay healthcare claims. And we use a third-party administrator to help us manage those claims, and that administrator, TPA, is currently Medbin. We do an annual contract with them, and before you tonight is a renewal. And I would like to ask Aaron Holes, your HR director, to come present the highlights of this renewal, any changes that are going to be going into effect on January 1st. Aaron?
As you can see in my memo, there's really just a couple of changes. There is a change to the per employee, per month fee, and that will result, depending on how many members on the plan, a little over $6,000. There's some other changes in language that we needed to make in order to provide for the new prescription plan, so allowing for the new HRA funds, and as well as the fees from RX Help Centers that will do the advocacy for anyone who has specialty medication. There's been some new legislation, the No Surprises Act, and so some new language was required to be added into the agreement for that as well. So, do you have any questions?
Aaron? No questions at this time? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-221.
Municipal order ratifying execution of declaration of a local state of emergency related to the tornado event on December 11th, 2021.
All moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
This declaration of local state of emergency allows us to do a lot of different things under the KRS 39A 100, as well as, I think, Section 200 is in addition to that. But we put this into play early Saturday morning, once the tornadoes had passed through, and just need board ratification of this declaration. This, along with the state declaration and the federal declaration, helps ensure that we get FEMA federal dollars reimbursement on a lot of different things. And so, just ask for your approval to ratify this action that was taken last two Saturdays ago, on the 11th. Hillary, do you have anything to add?
I don't. We did add 39B, 70, and that's probably what gives the mayor the power to do that, but I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you. Words can't express. That's all I have to say.
The county did the same thing, so they approved theirs on Friday at their fiscal court meeting.
I'm just going to brag on our mayor over here, who was the exact right person in the exact right place to be able to take on this disaster and lead us through it. And we're not through it, but his leadership skills shine through, and so, you know, he's 24/7 on this. And just to say thank you, Mayor Alcott.
Thanks is to what's been accomplished, what was accomplished. Honestly, it was the miracles that we saw that came after the emergency, and we will be unpacking this as a community for the rest of our lives to truly understand the testament of character, the resolve of not letting egos get in the way, not letting inner governments. It was truly one team, one fight. It was a pleasure to be part of, not what we ever wished, but it is something that we will never forget. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2021-222.
Municipal order approving actions of the city manager in accepting the emergency purchase of disaster debris monitoring services and federal emergency management agency reimbursement tracking for the tornado event from Tetra Tech, Inc.
All moved.
Second.
I can't think it's an interlateral, everybody, but I will take Commissioner Perigin, and second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
So, we have a, we had a big mess to clean up after Saturday, and I want to first of all thank Greg Meredith and Matt Powell with Public Works, who went to work day one, Saturday and Sunday, trying to figure out what are we going to do with all this mess? Who's going to clean it up, haul it off? And after much consideration and thought and analysis, thanks to Greg and Matt, it was decided that this is, this is a huge task, and we need a professional, and we wanted to maximize every dollar we can from FEMA and the federal government. And basically, we're on the clock right now. The first 30 days is 100% covered by FEMA. And so, we wanted to do it right, and we wanted a professional. So, Matt and Greg went out and looked, made a lot of calls, calls to other areas that had experienced major disasters in Florida, Alabama. And we found this firm, Tetra Tech, that we're recommending to you tonight, that basically oversees the process of the debris removal, weighing it, making sure everything is eligible for FEMA recovery reimbursement. And so, what we, what's before you right here, this million-dollar contract, is more or less an insurance policy, the way I look at it, to ensure that we can recover 100% of our cost. This is a city-county joint contract. We each have our own piece of it, and this before you, this item here is with Tetra Tech, and the memo basically outlines everything they're going to do for us in monitoring, tracking, the collection, and disposal of the cleanup that's already started as of Saturday. And Greg and Matt are here for any questions you might have.
I know that each of us have gone through the strategy, understanding the work that is being accomplished. Matt, huge kudos for you locking yourself up in a room for endless days, understanding that other things were happening, but understanding what we needed next. It is that type of strategic thinking that I think is the reason why we see these beautiful trucks going down our highways, picking up things like the government's working, and the government is working. I know the kudos go to many, but personally, thank you, on my behalf. Commissioners?
Thank you.
Go ahead, I apologize.
Sue?
All I'm going to say is thank you.
I want to ditto that, and I don't want to steal your thunder this time. You know what I'm talking about. But I just appreciate you guys doing what you're doing and stuff, because it was a disaster that we were hit with, and not to be almost as nine or 10 days out, it doesn't, some parts, doesn't even look like we're in a disaster, even though we were hit, and we were hit hard. So, I just want to let you guys know that I appreciate it, and thank you for like explaining some of the things so I can understand it, you know, by relying on your expertise. So, I appreciate you guys.
All right. No further discussion. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes.
Sorry, Mayor. Forgot to introduce, this is Allison. She's with Tetra Tech. She's our rep that's holding her hands and with us and leading and guiding us through this endeavor, and point person for Tetra Tech. I apologize, Allison, for-
I knew I recognized you. I was just like, where?
She was in our prior meetings, yes.
Glad to be here, glad to be here.
Thanks for being here.
Municipal order number 2021-223.
Municipal order approving the actions of the city manager in accepting the emergency purchase of disaster debris collection and disposal services for the tornado event from Crowder Golf LLC.
All moved.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
So, again, this is the second contract pertaining to the storm debris removal. We went out and looked hard for the best companies for this as well. They're listed in your memo. This is something we did originally think maybe some locals could handle this, but the more we checked around, more calls we made, Matt made and Greg made, decided this was unprecedented, and we needed a massive company that's done this before. And so, we made a lot of phone calls, and a lot of these firms here on your list also recommended Tetra Tech to work alongside of us as well. And so, we are recommending Crowder Golf. They're out of Mobile, Alabama, and they were in process, as of Saturday, rolling around town, picking up debris. We have everything worked out on where that is being taken, and to two different, is it two locations? The county had a location, and the city had a location, so we're taking that where it needs to go, and then it'll eventually be hauled off and disposed properly. And again, Tetra Tech is, will be here onsite monitoring, making sure they do everything correctly and in compliance with FEMA regs. And so, I believe everything is in your memo, but again, Greg and Matt are here to answer any questions about this contract with Crowder Golf in the amount of $3,964,950, which will be 100% eligible for FEMA reimbursement, given we get most of it done within 30 days, and we're hoping for an extension past that that we're working on as well.
Greg, where are the two locations that we're putting disposal debris, county, city?
So, the primary location right now, and probably will remain such, is our closed Lynn Lilly landfill. Now, it's not in the landfill portion, it's in the portion closer to the gate where you go in, where the tower is. It's where they kind of scraped the area before in order to cover the landfill up when they closed the landfill. And Matt, correct me if I'm wrong on any of that. So, yeah, it's about a 20-some acre area that will hold all the debris. We're starting again with vegetation now, to try to get some of that out of the way so we can move to the actual construction debris and the things from the houses, et cetera. So, that's the process.
I have a question, if you don't mind. I don't know if you want to answer it or if Matt, if they would explain, if one of you would explain to the public, you said we looked at local agencies. I have received some calls and saying, why didn't you all go local? So, if one of you all would share, I think that's fascinating when you look at how you all explained it to us. I'd like for the public to know that, please.
Sure, absolutely. Matt, would you like to come and talk about that?
Sir.
And it's not that the locals can't help, they're helping in other ways.
Mike, yes.
Yes, local contractors are involved. Todd and I think are guilty of a little bit of the same vein. I'm going to try to remain unemotional, too. I talked to most of our local contractors that we initially reached out to today to let them know why we went the way we did. Each and every one of them has reassured us that we made the right call. If every capable contractor in this community is picking up sticks for the next four months, who rebuilds? In essence, once we understood the quantities, we were looking at 13,000 tri-axle loads of material, the track hoes, the wheel loaders, the skid steers to load it all, destroying streets, destroying sidewalks, having negative impacts on our infrastructure everywhere, and a very, very long drawn-out process. And we learned very quickly over the course of those first two or three days that the kind of trucks that we're using here, the kind of processes that we're using at our DMSs, they exist for a reason, and that reason is it allows this community to get back to what it needs to do, to recover, to rebuild, while professionals take care of this. Is that adequate?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I had a follow-up question for the public. Just will you remind the public who do have debris that needs to be removed, where we need them to put it?
Yes, absolutely. So, these trucks are going to continue to ride in the various zones. In short, each driver is assigned a portion of the community, and within that area, because he's got to get around bucket trucks, and he's got to get around traffic, and there's so many things and so many moving parts, each driver kind of gets to outline how he moves through that area. But in that area, anything that that driver can reach that's in right-of-way, he will load into that truck and haul away. There are very few exceptions that are pointed out on the website that Jeff mentioned earlier. Right now, we're removing vegetation because we're grinding it into mulch to use that as a base for our continued operations when we handle all the mixed waste. But all storm-related debris that, if it gets to the curb, these folks are going to pick it up, haul it away, and dispose of it. One of the big things that volunteer organizations can do is after we pass through an area of the community, and we remove everything from the right-of-way, the things that couldn't get to the right-of-way because there wasn't room, help those folks bring that stuff forward. That's where volunteers can reach out to homeowners, to property owners. As that, as that material is removed from the right-of-way, you can bring more up, and we will come through again, and we will keep coming until it's gone, or until we run out of money, one of the two.
Matt, can you explain that there is some mulching? My understanding, and that is going to be helpful, or will we be able to retain that?
So, the mulch that we're generating right now is all of the vegetation that we're bringing in is going through a process. I'll show you a video after this, it's amazing. But it's getting mulched up, we're mixing it with the soil that's onsite. Right now, we have a hard time moving those trucks through without getting them stuck. So, the first thing that we use it for is to build a pad to work on top of. We can drive around on top of that mulch and not get stuck. The second part of that is, is that when we get ready to remove this operation and we get ready to put that piece of property back, once this is all over, we'll be able to pick up that mulch, haul that away to the landfill, and dispose of it, and the soil that remains can stay. So, it's going to help us with the environmental cleanup once we're, once it's complete. The rest of the mulch is a bit of a to-be-determined. We're going to have a surplus. Some of it may be used to amend the soils there on the landfill, they're pretty poor. And then beyond that, if we, if we have, actually, I think that's probably going to be what we do with it. If there's any additional, we're going to have to look into exactly what we do with it.
It's TBD, to be determined.
Yeah, with the excess. There's some concerns. There's the Emerald Ash Bore, there's lots of pests, and if you don't treat mulch the proper way, you can kind of spread those around and have some far-reaching impacts for the community.
Because they're just making the raw mulch, it's not a finished product.
It's not, no. It's just, it's just raw shredded salas.
I assumed it was, but I didn't know, so thank you.
That process actually just started today. That piece of equipment came from Western New York.
Ask one more follow-up question- Ask one more follow-up question related to the right-of-way. So, if they have a sidewalk in front of their property, just want to make sure we're clear to our community of where we want them to put it, if there's a sidewalk there, and are there visuals for them to know kind of where the right-of-way starts on their property?
That may be a better question for Greg.
Yeah, generally, it's where the utility poles are, if you look, not always, but most always. And so, we know that there are going to be sidewalks that are going to be temporarily covered, we certainly don't want that to be a long-term situation, that's why we've chosen the firm we have, because they can move a lot of material quickly with the trucks that they have. So, right-of-way is kind of limited in spaces, and so, you know, that's our charge from FEMA, is that to be fully reimbursable, it has to be on the right-of-way, so.
We do want them to right now put it on the right-of-way, even if it means sidewalk, because that's where it needs to be.
That's just the emergency kind of nature of the situation, I think, right now.
Thank you for clarifying that for our residents, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Yes.
I've got Sue down.
Ordinance Number BG 2021-47, first reading non-binding.
Move back Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
As you all will recall, when we issued geo-bonds for the ITA, in the inter-local was a section that provides for the ITA to come present their annual financial report. Before you tonight is the report for June 30th, 2021, and Meredith Rosansky is here with us tonight to help answer questions and present a brief summary to you. Meredith, you want to step up? Meredith is CEO.
[laughing].
Okay, if there are any questions.
It's an unqualified opinion, which means that there weren't, it's a clean audit, which is what we have at the ITA. I do want to thank the commission, without the support of the commission and the county, the ITA would not exist, and therefore, the trans park would not exist, and we wouldn't have the phenomenal economic development growth that we have, and so, thank you very much for your investment in that organization. But if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to take them.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, Meredith. Roll call please.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Yes.
I've got Sue down.
Ordinance Number BG 2021-47, first reading non-binding.
Back up one more, 2021-225. Municipal Order Authorizing the Acceptance of an Award for Kentucky Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Housing Funding from the Kentucky Department for Local Government in the Amount of $1 Million.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
Well, you all remember the million dollars we came to you asking to go after just a few weeks ago, we've already gotten it, so this is the acceptance of that, this will go toward building affordable housing with a partnership with Live the Dream. We think we're going to build, was it eight to 10 units? Where is Brent here?
Yes.
Is that about right?
Nine.
Nine? Eight, I said eight to 10, so I'm right there. So, appreciate the partnership with Live the Dream to make this housing funds go to work quickly. This is from the CDBG coronavirus funding that was left over that the state had, they reached out to us, and we had a place to put it, and would like to thank everybody for working on this, Nick, Brent, Katie with Housing Authority, as well as Mr. Abraham Williams, so we got it, we just need to accept it.
Whoa. Comments, questions? All right.
I'm really grateful for you all just, you know, doing whatever you can to help fill in this gap in affordable housing, and we know the storm has even put in a greater crunch on our system for a need for safe places and, you know, for, to raise a family. So thank you all for stepping up and helping us even before the storm, and I know you all be partners with us moving forward, and I'm just thankful for Neighborhood and Community Services for your leadership in helping our community make sure we all recover and we get places for all of our citizens to be able to live.
And likewise, you know, I know Katie and I have been working on it, and I always shout out, you know, Mr. Cook and stuff, but, you know, hats off to both of you, I know it's not correct, but definitely, you know, hats off to both of y'all because right now, we do see the need for, you know, housing, and I can't wait for the start for a family to move into those non-units, so hats off to you guys.
Katie, I know Abraham Williams is not here, but your team was immense to reaching out to real-time need for Red Cross during this event, not specific to this, but you were able to put families that didn't have homes and put them in homes, and that was real-time love and commitment that we witnessed and the miracles, many, many miracles that we've seen, so thank you. No further discussion, roll call please.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Now, Ordinance Number BG 2021-47, first reading non-binding.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate, ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 55.91 acres from PUD Plan Unit Development to LI Light Industrial, located at Zero Porter Pike, presently owned by Southern Kentucky Land LLC, with Holly Performance Products Inc. as the applicant.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
This was a 5-0 unanimous vote with Planning and Zoning Commission, and Mr. Ben Peterson is here, can answer any questions y'all might have on this rezoning on Porter Pike.
See, Mr. Peterson, any questions, comments from this time? Roll call please.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Ordinance Number BG 2021-48, first reading non-binding.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate, ordinance rezoning a portion of attractive land containing 9.86 acres from HB Highway Business to RM4 Multi-Family Residential, located at Zero Cooksey Lane, presently owned by the Hub at Lover's Lane LLC.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
This was another four, this was a 4-0 vote with one abstention for this rezoning, Cooksey Lane out pertaining to the Hub at Lover's Lane. Ben is here, can answer any of your questions. You can see on the map, it's kind of tucked in there with the Hub, so Ben is here, can answer questions. Unanimous vote, though.
Right, any questions? Roll call please.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Ordinance Number BG 2021-49, first reading non-binding.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate, ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 3.8993 acres from HB Highway Business to RM4 Multi-Family Residential, located at Zero Thames Valley Way, presently owned by Thames Valley Property LLC.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
Another 5-0 unanimous vote, creating more multi-family residential out at Thames Valley Way, and Ben can answer any questions.
I have a question.
Map is in your packet.
This is... Brown?
Mr. Peterson, it mentioned that there was a flood plain on a large portion of the property, and I saw that there is kind of a, you know, development plan, but I couldn't, my map reading skills were not adequate enough to just, if you could explain, sort of, is there buildings going to be in the flood plain, or is it away from it, is it, so just, I want to make sure that all this is...
So, the short answer to that question is, no structure in all of Warren County is allowed to be built in the flood plain, so they will not be building in the flood plain. It's just denoted that there is flood plain in existence on that property, but the way they have preliminarily laid out this development, none of the buildings nor parking will be in the flood plain.
Thank you, that was it.
You're welcome. Okay, now for comments, questions? Roll call please.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2021-226.
Municipal Order Accepting and Adopting the Bowling Green Fire Department Policy and Procedures Manual, dated November 2021.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
From time to time, we need to make corrections and amendments to our Policies and Procedures Manual, this is from the Fire Department. I believe you received this a week or two ago, it was a lengthy document, roughly 300 and some odd pages, I read every single word of it, and it was really good writing, by the way, Chief. So, but actually, Chief has given you a nice abbreviated summary in your packets of the changes that are being proposed, and is here, can answer any questions. I'll also like to thank his deputy chiefs for working on this, Deputy Chief Smith is here with us as well, but I'll allow you all to ask any questions to the chief pertaining to the changes in this policy manual for the Fire Department.
Questions, comments? We know you love you brothers, taking care of us, stepping up always, running to the fires, running to the help, running to where we need you, God bless y'all. Roll call please.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Ordinance Number BG 2021-50, first reading non-binding.
Ordinance Relating to Budget Amendment, ordinance approving amendment number two to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2022.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
We came to you just recently with the first budget amendment for FY '22, but this is needed, a couple items on this one, and first one is, we need to buy a couple of replacement vehicles for police, and so, we had some, two vehicles that were totaled and damaged and inoperable, and I believe we've already purchased those vehicles, but this would correct the budget for those. And then, secondly, I talked to each one of you individually about the need to accelerate the purchase of a couple of fire trucks to achieve some savings on a discount that's coming up. This is the budget amendment that puts that in place in the Equipment Replacement Fund. I don't want to steal Katie's thunder, but Katie's here, can answer any questions she might have on these two amendment items.
Questions, all right? Roll call please.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2021-227.
Municipal Order Approving Participation in the Opioid Litigation Settlement and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Master Settlement Agreements with Opioid Distributors McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen, and Manufacturer Jansen, and Further Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Participating Government Allocation Agreement.
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
I am going to hand this one off to our city attorney, Hillary Hottower, this is way over my head, so, Hillary?
This is something that, if you all will recall, we discussed about a month ago, these are, this is multi-district litigation that is nationwide. Back in the last legislative session, our legislature passed a statute that spells out how the money is divided that comes into the state, and basically waives local government claims for governments that do not opt-in. So, I recommend that we do opt-in, we're not a party, but we will benefit from opting in, we will receive funds. I've attached the statutes that explain to you how we can spend the money, opioid abatement, treatment, education. Right now, the first distribution is scheduled to begin, I believe, in April. The Jansen settlement is structured over nine years, it's front-loaded, the other two are over 18 years, so we're talking about payments over a long period of time. I've also attached for you, I think, our projected share, depending on what kind of opt-in we get, and we will need to enter into an allocation agreement, I've asked for your permission to go ahead and do that. There are two floating around, at this point, really, either one of them will be beneficial to us, they've changed the language in the main one to satisfy some questions that I had, so this will get us into this, and hopefully, we'll start getting money in April that you all can then allocate, we'll come back to you to determine how you want to spend it.
Thank you, Hillary, I believe I have some emails in there as we speak, so we'll have to follow up on that.
Please send them to me, because our deadline is January 2nd.
Copy.
So.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call please.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Municipal Order Number 2021-228.
Municipal Order Approving Gift Card Donations to the City of Bowling Green for Housing Choice Voucher Recipients Impacted by the Tornado Event from Bowling Green-Warn County Impact Funds.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
So, as of this afternoon, I think this will remain intact, we had 13 families or individuals that were impacted with our Housing Choice Voucher Program related to the storms, and so, fortunately, we have this Bowling Green-Warn County Impact Fund that is wanting to donate $500 gift cards to give to these individuals that are participating in our Housing Choice Voucher Program. And so, any donation, as usual, that's over $5,000 will, needs to be approved by you all, so we're bringing this to you tonight, and we will, if you approve and accept this, our Housing Division will take this on and get these gift cards to the recipients that were impacted by the storms, and we believe, we originally had 16, but we had a couple of those that have already moved on to another town, so we are looking at a net of 13, according to Brent. Is Brent still here?
Yes.
Brent, do you have anything to add? Y'all have any questions?
I just want to add one thing, this was completely unsolicited, this group brought these to us, I think, Monday or Tuesday, in a Ziploc sack, and said, here, we want you to help people that have been impacted and your voucher holders, so I do appreciate this group, and the other thing is, they do not want to be known who they are, and so, that's why it's just kind of the Warren County Impact Fund, so we do appreciate their support in looking out for our Housing Choice Voucher holders in this process.
Wonderful news. Roll call please.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
Ordinance Number BG 2021-46, second reading binding.
Ordinance Approving Mutual Aid Agreement, ordinance approving a mutual aid agreement between the City of Bowling Green and Warren County Sheriff's Office.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
This is a second reading of the mutual agreement that we brought to you last meeting, this is for our fire investigators to go out and assist the county sheriff's department with arson investigations, we have had a multitude of those in recent months, and our guys are very skilled and qualified to assist with this, and we are always willing to try to help out our brothers and sisters across the street, and so, this agreement kind of outlines our responsibilities and their responsibilities, and I think you all were unanimous on this at the prior meeting, just asked for, need a second reading.
And I believe, correct me wrong, Chief Brooks, that we saw this act in the last few days, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Quite where they're coming to our aid, correct? Or help?
Yeah. We, we helped.
That type of event, we crossed lines, to be honest with you, without your approval here tonight, we just responded, they responded, and we were in the same room together at the EOC, so, yeah.
Farce a lot of unprecedented lines this week.
Yeah, yeah, but we're here, so.
Who will? Thank you, Chief.
Forgiveness is easier than permission, right?
Absolutely.
This is for, this is a good call.
Well, our brothers and sisters in their county came to our help when we needed the most, and they would have done it without or with agreement, doesn't matter, they did. Roll call please.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2021-229.
Municipal Order Approving Emergency Response Cost Sharing Agreement Between the City of Bowling Green and Warren County.
I'll move.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So, this is a cost-sharing agreement pertaining to the two contracts we did earlier with Tetra Tech and Crowder Goal, and thank you to Hillary for working on this, and Katie and others. Basically, the Tetra Tech and the Crowder Goal contracts, the cost allocation will be based on a scientific formula and how they document each and every piece of debris that they haul off and move, and then I believe the other piece of this was the rental of the old Sears building, Sears space at the mall, how we're going to split that cost with the county, addresses that, and for the disaster relief center, and was there anything else, Hillary? Does that cover it?
I think, yeah.
Do you have anything to add?
It just addresses those three items. FEMA requires us to have an agreement, and I think it's best for us to have one anyway. As you said, we've worked with the county closely, and just to lay those terms out as far as who's going to pay what, so that's...
Tetra Tech will give us amounts that we owe and give the county the amounts that they owe. Same thing with Crowder Goal. They will bill us separately with the appropriate amounts based on the work that they did. Everything's tied to GIS. They know exactly where they picked up something or monitored something, so it's all laid out in their system, so it's easy to track.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. These are the late filled items added to the agenda ordinance, excuse me, number BG 2021-51, emergency ordinance binding.
Emergency Ordinance Amending Property Tax Deadline. Emergency Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number BG 2021-36 to Provide For A New Property Tax Deadline.
I'll move. Second.
Move back Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
I'm going to ask Katie to take this one. This is something we've been working on as kind of a relief-type measure, and Katie, you want to explain it? Katie Schaller Ward, Assistant City Manager, CFO.
So, when we originally set our property tax rates back in September, we had a deadline at December 31st, 2021. January 1st, if it's not paid by then, you have a 10% penalty, and then interest starts to accrue at half a percent per month. So, we, in the wake of the disaster, as the city manager indicated, we thought, this is two weeks before the deadline, and we need to push that deadline out a little bit further to help out some folks that could have been significantly impacted, and if they're having to deal with deductibles and different things, and maybe not have enough insurance or something to that effect, we thought this could just give them a little bit of extra time. So, it's going to be a 90-day extension. March 31st, 2022 will be the deadline. As soon as that date passes, then the penalty and interest would apply, and so that's why we wanted to extend this out. We also collect on behalf of the city school district, and we did talk to them and confirm, so both the city and the city school district, we are collecting the same. So, there will be, they're in agreement to this, as many of their folks were also impacted. So, again, this will take effect basically immediately. We're just, we'll do some social media and some communication tomorrow to make sure that the public is aware that the deadline has been extended, but it will be March 31st now.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Right. No further discussion. Roll call, please.
One clarification, and I might ask Hillary to explain, but this is an emergency order, and it goes into effect immediately, so Hillary, you want to explain that a little bit more?
Sure. KRS 83A060, sub-paragraph seven, allows us in an emergency to pass an ordinance without two readings, as long as we do a, as long as there's a two-third vote, majority vote, then the ordinance passes based upon the emergency. If we were to do two readings, obviously, we would be past the property tax deadline, so we are doing it as an emergency ordinance with one reading, and it will be, it just has to be published within 10 days.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Ordinance number BG 2021-52, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance Creating Interlocal Memorandum of Understanding. Ordinance Approving an Interlocal Memorandum of Understanding between Warren County, City of Bowling Green, and Intermodal Transportation Authority, Inc., related to the acquisition of additional real property for the expansion of the Kentucky Transpark.
I'll move.
Second.
Move back Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
Going to try to remember all of the details to this deal, but this is something we came to you all several weeks ago. This is a property acquisition, so we were able to discuss this with you in closed session, but I think we all had, we had a unanimous or consensus to do this. So, in the transpark, the ITA, we are in need of additional land, and, but we also do not want to incur any more debt, and so fortunately, the ITA was able to purchase an additional 332 acres recently to create more land for all of these companies that we are bringing to Bowling Green and Warren County, and so there was an additional tract of land or farm adjacent to this that we needed to acquire to position us for some future announcements. That land is, consists of 442 acres, and the price of that land is roughly $12 million, and so with this ordinance, you all would agree to, we would agree to pay for half of that land to, for the ITA to get control of that land, so that we could offer that to some prospects coming up, and the county has also agreed to cover the other $6 million for the purchase of this land, and we have a transpark property acquisition MOU in this packet that lays out the, how we would recoup our money. The reimbursement would come from land sales, I think wage tax assessments on any new companies that come to the ITA, and land on this property that we are purchasing for the ITA. Hillary worked hard on this with the ITA attorney, and can answer any questions on this, along with Katie as well. Katie and Hillary worked closely on this together with the ITA. Meredith is in the room as well, and was in several meetings that we discussed this, and we feel like this is the best plan, and we, I think we have discussed this with you all, as I mentioned earlier, and this avoids us issuing any more debt for the time being up there, and it also allows for us to recoup our investment of $6 million.
Discussion, questions? Nice. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Mrs. Jackson, will you check to see if we have any public comments at this time? Honor, please, we ask that you keep it within three to five minutes. Five minutes is not to exceed, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, good evening. My name is Dwayne Connor. I'm on the Board of Directors of Rumenean and Bowling Green. Came here tonight to share updated statistics for the Rumeneans' tract regarding individuals experiencing homelessness in the City of Bowling Green between November 15th through last night, December 20th. Over the 35 nights this season, a total of 13 local churches have taken turns hosting 64 individuals who, for one reason or another, are unable to obtain a bed at Salvation Army for a given night. These 64 individuals have spent a total of 358 shelter nights with the Rumeneans, 13 local churches, over the last five weeks. This period includes Friday night, December 10th, when Rumeneans sheltered 19 homeless men and women from the tornadoes that hit Bowling Green and the region. Since the last commission meeting on Tuesday, December 7th, the average nightly number of individuals who've, we've been hosting has risen from six to nine. Over the last two weeks, we've hosted at least nine guests per night, and at one night, we had 22 guests. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to provide this information.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. We appreciate your service to our community.
Thank you, sir.
I recognize the young lady. We've met at, over at the Sears. I apologize, I don't have your card. I know she's come in from Atlanta, Georgia, and she's hit the boots ground running, but we'd like to have you join in and provide some information to our small business.
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that. I was late and with the Senator's Office. So, my name is Tahida Matine. I'm with the United States Small Business Administration, Offers of Disaster Assistance, out of Atlanta, Georgia. The DRCs are open at the Sears Building. There's just so much to talk about, so I have to kind of, you know, be as brief as possible. Just continue to let your constituents know. You can share it online, your social media, that the Disaster Recovery Center is open at the Greenwood Mall, the Sears Center. We just opened another business recovery center in Warren County, so now Bowling Green has one. It is, I just got this today, it's at the Western Kentucky University Center for Research and Development.
Oh, that's the old mall.
Okay. The old mall, so the DRC is at the mall right now, 2413 Nashville Road. I can, I believe I got your card yesterday, so I don't know if you want me to email you this, or who would you like for me to get this to?
Okay. You can forward it to me.
I'll give you my card, too.
As long as you get it to us, we'll make sure it's put out, and we can update our website. Also, I can share with you, I believe I can, our hardest-hit businesses. We have their names. We referred you to several. They may have called you directly after they talked to us, which is why you're here. I mean, that's what we're trying to do, correct?
Yes. Do you all have a spreadsheet of?
We do.
Yeah, I would like the spreadsheet, because I can, I would prefer to reach out to them, but if they call me, you know, I'm not going to turn away or anything, but I will reach out to them individually. It's just that when individuals reach out to me, they think that I'm the go-to, the lone officer, but I will absolutely...
You can check them to the right dots.
Absolutely. That's why I said...
And I can't understand everything that you can explain to them, or at least channel them, but I understand.
Yeah, but I would like a spreadsheet of them. If y'all have like a, you know, not just one by one, but if you have a whole list, I would absolutely get that.
I will, we will provide that. I have your card.
Okay, okay.
I know where to find you.
Okay, thank you.
And also, if our small business owners who have been impacted, what hours are you there at the old mall?
From 8:00 AM, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. This Friday, Friday is Christmas Eve, Saturday we're closed. I believe on Christmas Eve is 12 to 6, noon to 6. I'll get those hours for you.
Do they need to bring any documentation with them, if they come in person, or just...
Whatever they have, whatever they can scrounge up from being in a disaster, because I know a lot of things are lost. We can recreate documents. The Senator Rand Paul's office, I spoke with today, they said they can recreate documents, so whatever they can gather up, social taxes, we can contact the IRS, we can get their tax forms, so whatever they, whatever they have, basically, because I know a lot of things are lost. And there's something else that I want to mention. The SBA is also helping homeowners and renters, churches, nonprofit organizations, private organizations. So, in times of disasters, the government says that we can not only do low-interest rate loans to businesses, small businesses, but businesses of any size, and homeowners, renters, nonprofits. But FEMA, we always say register with FEMA first. They will refer people to us. The only way that FEMA will then turn around and do additional assistance to those people is if they do go through SBA, just to kind of, I guess, exhaust and see whatever, you know, as much money as they can get. We won't duplicate insurance funds, so we just kind of fill in the gaps, and the physical damages includes automobiles as well through the SBA, so. So, if no other questions, I would like to get the BRC press release to you via email. I'll give you my card as well.
I'd like to talk to you.
Okay, so I'll stay. So, if no other questions, that's all I have.
Thank you for being...
Okay. No problem.
Check in those dots. Appreciate that.
Awesome. Thank you. I'll see you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's been a year. We can put 2021 behind us. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. I appreciate the professionalism working amongst great city leaders and a great city. Jeff, Mr. Mizel, thank you very much to you and your team. God bless all, and Merry Christmas. Perigin.